Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the city council meeting for January 7th, 2008 to order. First thing on the agenda as always is roll call and determination of a quorum. Jackie, please.
McCroy, Johnson.
Here.
Hadcock.
Here.
Crowe-Butt.
Here.
Kreppke.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Weifenbach.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. Thank you. Just a reminder for everyone, if you do have a cellphone or a pager, please turn that off. The rule is if it goes off during the meeting, you buy donuts. So, that could be expensive for you. Also, if you wish to speak to any item on the agenda or during our general public comment period, we do have speaker request forms. They look like this. They're on the side table over here, the media table. If you'd fill those out and actually put your name and the item so we make sure we don't miss you, and then turn them up to, turn them into Jackie over here, and she'll make sure they get up, up front here, and that way we make, we'll make sure we don't overlook you. And with that, let's see, is Marvin Flowers here. Very good. If everyone would please stand for their invocation. Marvin Flowers is from the First Christian Church, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we invite you into this room, thanking you for people who are willing to sacrifice an evening away from family and away from ballgames, different activities that they could be involved in, because they believe in the strength of our community. I thank you for each person who's coming tonight with requests and needs, and I pray that there would be wisdom in this room. I thank you for a new year, a brand-new start. I thank you for bringing me to a new community where people care, where things like streets and parking and things like that are very important. And I thank you that we live in a country where it's possible for people to have differing opinions and ideas, knowing that you will take care of us. And so, we claim the promise of Scripture that you have vested us with authority in the church, in the home, in the families, and yes, in the government, and that this is your implement for protecting the rights of the innocent. And so, tonight, Father, we invite you into this room. We pray for your peace and your wisdom. In Jesus' name, amen.
..............................................................................
Thank you, everyone. Next, as always, we do have the adoption of the agenda. Let's see here. We do have a request to pull item 45 and move it until after item 57. That comes from the staff. Are there any additional items that the council would like placed on the agenda? Let's go to Mr. Jim Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to add an introduction, invitation to the council of probably staff item 68, 60A.
Very good. We also have two other items. We do have a presentation for retiring police, or Fire Chief Gary Shepherd. We'll do that under, let's see, we'll do that under awards and recognitions. And we also do have to swear in our new city attorney, Michael Shad, so we'll also include that under awards and recognitions. So, we'll do that up front. Anything additional? Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add an item under older person items called City Water Supply and Update on Jackson Springs.
Very good. Well, let's see. We will call that 59A. Anything additional to the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We do also now at this time need to approve the minutes for the December 17th and the December 27th special city council meetings.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. This time, we'll go into awards and recognition, and if I could have Gary come on up, and if you want to bring your lovely wife, please do. We'll meet you up front here. Yeah, we'll give that a try. Well, you know, this is one of those bittersweet moments where we get to say congratulations and goodbye to a long, a longstanding employee of the city of Rapid City. Gary Shepherd has been with the city of Rapid City for 32 years. The last nine years as our fire chief, and I always like telling this story. I remember nine years ago during the interview process, I was fortunate enough to actually be on the selection committee, and it was interesting because if you know Gary, he typically doesn't have a whole lot of facial expressions. He's pretty, usually pretty straight-faced. And through the whole process, of course, he was a top candidate, and he answered all the questions right. And when he left the room, and I said this last night when I was teasing him at, yeah, to his going-away party, is the fact that, the only thing I noticed was the fact that he didn't seem very excited at the time. Well, if you get to know Gary, that's the way he is. He's very even-tempered, and he always thinks things through. He has been a, a true champion for the fire department for the last 32 years, and specifically the last nine years as a fire chief. Everything from, from getting new fire stations to buying new equipment, to probably the biggest task that the fire department's ever taken on in Rapid City's history, and that is the fact that we've taken over the ambulance service. And that was about eight years ago, Chief? Seven years ago? Somewhere, somewhere in...
2003.
2003. And so, I mean, that was a huge task. You didn't do that one after that yet, didn't you? So, and I know that I'm standing up here embarrassing Gary, but on behalf of the city council, on behalf of all the employees of the city, and on behalf of all the citizens of Rapid City, we truly owe a great debt of gratitude to Gary Shepherd. It's, it's one of those times where you can stand up and truly say that Gary has made a lasting impression on our community, not only the fire department, the city, but also the community as a whole. And with that, Gary, I just want to say congratulations. You will be truly missed. Just don't forget us, about us down here in Rapid City when we move up to Spearfish, but please come visit whenever you can. Chief, thank you.
Mayor's taller than I am. Well, geez, I'm, I'm one of the lucky people that has been born and raised here and spent literally all of my life here. And as I started with the city in, in my adult years, I figured that it was going to take about 32 years before I paid back the community for some of the things I probably got away with growing up. But it truly has been a great ride. You guys in Rapid City have a phenomenal fire department, most dedicated people that, that I've ever had the pleasure to work with. Anytime, you always hire type-A personalities in the fire service, and trying to get 135, 36 of them herded down the same path sometimes is a challenge. But we seem to get the job done. Those guys are great, and it's been a pleasure to be a part of that. So, thank you very much.
And at this time, we do require that our city finance officer swear in our new city attorney. So, Mike, if you come up, and Mr. Preston will administer your oath.
I, Michael Shad.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation.
That I take this obligation.
Freely, without any mental reservation. Or for the purpose of evasion. That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I perform the duties of the Assistant City Attorney for the City of Rapid City, South Dakota.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability. So, help me get it. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That was pleasant. Congratulations again, Chief. We're going to certainly miss you. Now is the time for the general, general pub, public comment period. This is a time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taking, taken at this meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous vote of the council members present. We do not have any speaker request forms. Is there anyone that has any topic they'd like to bring in front of the city council that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, very good. We will move on to the non-public hearing items. This is items 1 through 60. First thing the chair would look for is a motion to open the public comment period for items 1 through 45.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Discussions on items 1 through 45. We do have a speaker request form for, from Jack, it must be Core, on item number seven. Yep, you're up, sir. And if you, for your, for the record, would you please identify yourself, please?
I'm Jack Core. I'm representing Core Construction Services. I'm addressing item number seven. It's the change order in front of the council this evening. I brought this in front of the Public Works Committee a couple times. We're here tonight to ask the council to not approve the change order, and we believe there's $4,900 of that change order that's being unfairly taken from us and given to the building contractor for the burn building. Everything in our business has tolerances in the construction business, and anchor bolts is what we're up against on this issue. And on our plans and the building manufacturer's plans, there's no specific tolerance. Therefore, we go back to what is an industry standard or a referenced standard. And in our specifications, the reference standard is the American Concrete Institute, which is, which allows a one-inch tolerance plus or minus for anchor bolts. And maybe in front of you there, or the Public Works Director has a drawing that clearly shows those anchor bolts are well within the industry standard tolerance. And, and we, we believe that if the building manufacturer needed, what they said after the project was done, they needed an eighth-inch tolerance. And if they needed an eighth-inch tolerance, we argue that, that it should have been on their plan, so we were aware of that prior to starting the project. Doesn't matter what you do in life, whether it's a baseball game or construction, you can't change the rules after the game's over to make it turn out in your favor. And, and we think that's what happened here. And how it got so far out of hand, I'm not totally sure. This is seven months since we completed our portion of the project. And I've been doing, in commercial construction for 12 years now, and I've never had an issue that I couldn't resolve with the engineer or the owners. And, and even to this day, I'm a little unclear why it's taken so long. I think maybe the city attorney at the Public Works Committee meeting maybe answered that question for me when there was a motion on the floor to, to award this in our favor, and he, he informed the committee members that he feared if WHP wasn't paid their $5,000 that they may initiate a lawsuit. And I truly hope for the sake of all small-business people that this decision hasn't been, hasn't been made assuming the threat that someone might file, file a lawsuit, and that it's been fairly addressed, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form on item 45 from Toby Kearns, but just a point of order, just so you know, that item has been moved to after item number 57, and we will have a separate public comment period, and we'll remind you of that. Is that, is that, is that acceptable, Mr. Kearns? Okay, very good. We'll save that one. Any additional? Seeing none, the chair would look for a motion to... Chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have closed the public comment period. We do have the consent calendar, items 1 through 45. 45 has already been pulled and moved to after item number 57. Is there any additional consent items that the council would like pulled? Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 44, please.
Item 44. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
It was the same one I was going to...
Okay, very good. Any additional? Any additional? Then the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar with the, items 1 through 45, with the exception of item 44 and 45. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Item seven, please.
Okay, the chair will look back to the motion maker. Is that all right with the motion maker to include seven in, in the seconder? I would assume we're okay. Okay, very good. So, the motion on the floor is to prove, to approve the consent item, items 1 through 45, with the exception of items seven, 44, and 45, which has been moved. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to item number seven. And Lloyd McCroy, could you read that in, please?
Approve change order number 1F for the Rapid City Fire Department burn building site and building foundation project to Core Construction Services and Company for an increase of $3,520.2. Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to have some clarification from our Public Works Director on this, if possible. And I've had a chance to think about this over the last several days, and there was some discussion in, in Public Works relating to the inclusion of, of, or the assumption of tolerances when placing anchor bolts in, in concrete. And I readily admit that this is not an area I'm, I'm familiar with, but the contractor did seem to make a fairly solid case that industry standards relating to an inch are acceptable, and that if, if, in terms of tolerances, and that if tolerances weren't acceptable, that they should have been written right into the contract. And I guess I would just like to ask our Public Works Director, if we had to do this contract all over again, would we have specifically said that industry standards and tolerances would be, would not apply, that it would be the absolute specific in, in the contract?
Mr. Jablonsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Short answer is no. When, if, if you look, and I can put that, if anybody'd like to see it, I have a, a drawing of the detail here. Two things were asked for. That the bolts be two-and-a-half inches from the face of the wall. If the inch is a tolerance, that means they could have been anywhere from an inch and a half to three-and-a-half inches from the wall. If you break that down percentages, that's obviously not very acceptable. And it's not just an eighth of an inch here, here or there. If you, if you do that for, not every bolt, but virtually every bolt was, was out of that, off of that two-and-a-half inch dimension, that compounds itself one way or the other. And that's where the problem came in. If each bolt had been like an eighth of an inch off a little bit, one, you know, the same direction, probably wouldn't have made a lot of difference. But an eighth of an inch to the left, and an eighth of an inch to the right, or half an inch, or an inch here and there, you add that up over the entire length of, of the building, that's, that's what's not acceptable. It stated accurately... That's the wrong word to use. The word is accurate. Anchor bolts must be accurately placed as shown on the drawings. That's what was in the, the shop drawings. As shown on the drawing says they're two-and-a-half inches from the face of the wall.
Okay. Sam follow-up?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Further discussion? Further discussion? Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little bit confused on what we're voting on on this. I'd like some clarification. I understand that Mr. Core came forward to deny this. It was an increase to his contract. I guess I'm looking for someone to explain to me what we're voting on here.
Dirk, you want to give it a try?
I can, Mayor. Thank you. Change order number 1F under item seven is to Core Construction Services. They did the footing and foundation work. They had asked for an amount, what we're, what we're recommending is the amount of $3,520.20. $4,949.91 was taken from, was deducted from their original request. So, you could add that 4,900 amount and the 3,500 amount. That was their original request. If you look at item number eight, that is a change order to WHP Training Towers for this. They were the, the building contractor, if you will. That, they had originally asked for five, or $10,516, which is the amount they paid a subcontractor to, to realign the anchor bolt location, the base plate holes. We paid them only $5,566.9. So, that total cost for what we considered, what staff considered the misalignment of the bolts, which was $10,516, we deducted $5,566.9 from WHP and $4,949.91 from Core Construction. Is that clear?
Mr. Weifenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you. It clarifies a little bit, but it looks like here that we're, we're asking for an increase of the 3,520, which is actually, that, that makes kind of like a reverse.
Let's go back to Dirk here.
That's for other work that was done.
Right.
So, that, that $3,520.20 is, is a, is what's remaining after the $4,950 was deducted. That, that we feel we still owe Core Construction. That's for other work outside of the, outside of this bolt issue.
Additional follow-up?
So, we had, we've had conversation with Mr. Core?
Several.
Okay, anything else?
Can I direct a question to Mr. Core?
Yes, you can.
Mr. Core, you obviously wanted to decline this item because you feel you did what was right.
We do. I, I, you know, talking to other local steel erectors, you know, they say that making minor notches in the...
Mr. Core, I'll let you finish your sentence, but just, just a word of caution. At this point in the council, typically when a question is answered, it needs to be very specific and very short, but I'll, I'll let you finish your thought. But just so you know that we're not going to let you repre, re-present your case again, but if you could just answer the question, thank you. Sorry about that.
Other local erectors indicate that this is, this is something that they do on a day-to-day basis. It's not... And to answer, what was your question again? Sorry.
Could you restate the question?
I think you answered my question. I...
We, we felt we did the project per the specifications, and we followed industry standards. They built the building successfully on our foundation, and, and I feel the work they did is, is something typical.
Ron, you still have the floor, sir.
That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Can I ask Mr. Core a question?
State your question, please.
Did you know you had 74 bolts an inch off on there, not just a couple? Is that correct?
There's not 74 bolts that are an inch off. They range in, in, from an eighth, from, from being perfectly located up to 5 eighths of an inch off. None of them are an inch off that, that we were made aware of.
Okay. And I know when building a building, if you're that far off on some of that, it starts adding up to bigger and bigger amounts. On this set, can you honestly say that those bolts, I, I don't build as well, but I know from some building from my husband, and this is what I'm trying to get at, if he built it by standards and specifications, and he followed the directions, I'm not still getting why, if he did it the way he was supposed to, why we're still taking the money, and why it's come to the council for this issue. It should be between the contractor and him. He should get paid if he, if he did it by specifications, because that's how we do our bids and our selections. So, could, I don't know if anybody besides him can tell me, but I'm not getting it still why he's not getting paid.
Can I answer?
Very shortly, if you could, please.
When we were all complete with the project, we had a final inspection and, and no punch list items to say, and the building manufacturer showed up and said, well, wait a minute. We needed an, we can only have an eighth of an inch tolerance in order to set our, our base plates and bolt our building down without having to do some minor notching on the plates.
Okay.
So, after the fact, they said, this is extra work for us. Who's going to pay us? I say, if you want an eighth-inch tolerance, you should have put it on your plan so that we knew that. And, and, and like Dirk said last week, is, is an eighth of an inch is an attainable tolerance, but it's going to cost, take someone additional time and cost someone extra money.
So, let me ask you something. When you read the directions, is there a manufacturer's directions that you followed when you did this, or there, I mean, your specip, speci, the specifications were done by an architect drawing on the paper?
Yeah. The architect drew them up, and he referenced the American Concrete Institute as their reference tolerance.
And it's, it said at that, excuse me, one more thing. It said at that point where to put them and how to put them on, and you followed those directions.
Exactly.
Okay? Thank you.
Anything else?
One more thing. The change orders for the burn building on the 3,000 and 12,000, is that on the 2012 money? Is that where we're getting the change order money from?
Let's go to either Jim Preston or Dirk. I believe that was actually within, I think, the contingency clause, is not? The, the funding source for the change orders. While you guys are looking, let's go ahead and go to the next one in line. We'll come back. Alderman Lloyd McCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. We, we discussed this heavily during the, the Public Works Committee meeting twice on two different occasions, and it finally come clear, I think, when we had the architect come up and explain what happened. And what he explained was the, the first bid that went out said to industry standards for these. And when they, when they revised it and sent it to them again, it said accurately the second time they signed off for it. And that was the changeover for me during the Public Works meeting, say that, you know, these people deserve their... And that was the changeover for me during the Public Works meeting, say, that, you know, these people deserve their money back. I mean, the, the other company that erected the building ended up paying $10,000 to have 71, you know, all the fabrication done up so it'd all go back together again. And they're still losing money. They paid it, the, so they're both losing money. Not only the one who did the building, but also Mr. Core. It's not just one, it's a, it's an even loss on this, and that's why we, the, Dirk did a, I think, did a very fair job and them guys have gone through all the, the paperwork and finding a fair solution for both. And I, I'm in favor of supporting the motion on the floor, the way it is, is to approve the, the change. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go next to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Well, this is a, a little bit confusing, but I guess my question would be for, for Dirk would be, after, uh, the contractor realized that these were placed not cor- or, or not correctly placed, was Core Construction contacted to, uh, to fix the problem? Or, and they declined to do that, or did the other contractor just go out and have it replaced on his own?
Dirk Jablonski.
Thank you, Mayor. There was some discussion, I'm not sure, I, you may have to, may have to direct that question to Mr. Core. I believe that the, um, the building contractor was given the opportunity to change the base plates, thinking that that was easier to do than to move the bolts that were already poured in and set in concrete. So we left it up to the building contractor, not Mr. Core.
Ron, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, then what was, what was changed? Were, were the, the bolts and stuff moved, or did the other contractor change the plates?
The plates were altered.
Okay.
Let's next go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. And to break this down, the city has so much on this, uh, on this contract between these two contractors to actually make this payment. The person that brought the building in had paid out additional money to get this corrected and had that come out of his pocket, as Lloyd talked about, and he's not going to be fully reimbursed for this. I first, uh, when I first heard Mr. Core, I, I, I tended to go in his direction because there are tolerances. I've run concrete and I know how hard it is to, to keep your anchor bolt straight, and however it can be done. But I was convinced after the architect came forward and said that he, this was in his career, that he hadn't seen one quite this bad, that not just one or two or three or five anchor bolts were off, but they were all off. And what eventually happened was that the, the second contractor had to go in and hire somebody to correct it so he could actually do his work. So normally, I think, uh, Mr. Core's probably right, you don't need to have that kind of tolerances. In this case, uh, it did state that, and it stated even in his second paper, according to Mr. Bafuco, I think it was his name, the architect. So no matter what we do here tonight, we're not going to make either party happy because they both want additional money. And at some point, we have to recognize, we can't reconi- reconcile this and, and make everybody happy. We have to make a decision. And I think the staff worked out a fairly good, uh, compromise and, and I guess if it isn't, if it doesn't work for both parties, I guess we'll go to court over the deal. And one of the things that the, uh, the, uh, staff said is, you know, let's don't put this out to do different contractors. That was our second time of making the same mistake. We tried to have a local contractor do part of this work and it just didn't work out. I guess if the same contractor did the, the footings, just did the building, we wouldn't be in this boat. He'd be fighting amongst himself. In this case, we have two different contractors and they both feel that, that they, they did the work that was required. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Let's go to our City Finance Officer, Jim Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the question was, is, is there, was there, is there funding available to cover the $3,900?
Yes.
Answered BS. There's half a million dollars from 2012 funds for the burn building and they've committed 460,695 today.
In other words, the funding has been identified.
What's that?
The funding has been identified.
Yep.
Very good, thank you. Let's next go to Alderman Karen Olson.
I was just going to suggest that if this debate went on, it would be important to have Mr. Bafuco and JR present in this discussion. They were present at the, um, at the Public Works Meeting in which this was vetted at some, at some extent, and I think it became very clear to the committee that this was, that what we've, what is a motion on the floor was the appropriate action to take in this, in regard to this. And Mr. Bafuco and I visited further about that, and he did, he said he really did think the inaccuracies were, um, problematic. And I think he used stronger language than that, actually.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Just another question. Did Mr. Core do any other work besides the bolts on this burn building? Did his company do any other work, Dirk, besides that, if I could?
Dirk.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Core Construction was responsible for all the footing and foundation work.
So everything was good except for the bolts?
Yes, ma'am.
And we paid him for everything else?
Well, this change order, uh, would, would pay him for everything else. A- as far as staff's concerned, we still owe him that $3,520.
And his work was acceptable on everything else?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, except the bolts, which he followed in directions and, and someone had talked about the architect. And I know in this case, guys, um, my husband has dealt with architects and he does love architects, but they have messed up many and been off many a time. So, um, in defense, um, because an architect tells you that it was off and the whole thing had a mess, it seems like Mr. Core has done the other things right, and now he took his money off his bolts and we're not telling him they're acceptable and the architect's telling you something different. I'm going to disagree with this. I think he should be paid. So, um, I'm going to make a substitute motion that we do pay Mr. Core for, um, his work. If you look at the situation, it seems like he's done the other work good. If he had any issues before, I could see us taking his money. But in this case, he's done it right. He read the directions and he read them by there. And if there was a second plan, then he should have been able to go back by the contractor and have him fix those. He was not asked. And I think that's a fair statement. If you do something wrong, you ask me first, I come back and fix it. And then if I don't want to, I take your money. So, um, that would be my substitute is to pay him for his work. He deserves the money.
Very good. We have a substitute motion and we have a second. Okay, we have substitute motion and a second. And for clarification, Mr. Preston, can you give us the dollar amount? Because we would have to add the 35.20 and 20 cents to the amount that was deducted. Can you give us the amount, please? Dirk.
I can do that, Mayor, thank you. Uh, we're looking, uh, the, the difference between what, uh, staff is recommending, what Mr. Core's, uh, requesting is $4,949.91.
Okay, very good. So the motion, substitute motion on the floor, yes, Jimmy got a total for me? If I can tell you what it is. It's 35, 35.20, let's see, 3,520.20 plus the 49.49.91. Is that correct? Eighty-four. Malcolm's up here doing public math, we'll see how good he is. Eighty-four is 64, 69 and 91 cents. Everyone clear on that motion? Discussion on that motion, please. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to pose a couple of questions here and whoever you feel that needs to answer that. Let me see if I got this right. What, if we approve what Alderman Hadcock is saying is, is that he'll get paid full price for, for what he's done. Is that correct?
Dirk.
Yes. He'll get paid for what he believes he's owed for what he's done.
And what about the builder that had to pay to get the holes re-drilled?
Uh, right now, we're, we're offering to pay him out of, um, his, his cost was $10,516. We're recommending that we pay him $5,566.09.
So, Mr. Mayor, so what I understand is so that he gets paid full and the guy that had to fix the problems is not getting paid full?
Dirk.
If item eight, uh, the change order one F for WHP is approved as recommended, that's correct.
It's already been approved, Dirk. It was on the consent calendar.
So I'm confused now. Tell me, could you explain that again?
Dirk, you're referring to item number eight, which has been approved on the change, has been approved on the consent calendar. So the answer, Alderman O'Krepke's question is, uh, on number eight in that, uh, that WHP, uh, did have about $5,000 withdrawn, actually withheld from their request. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And they were agreeable to that.
And so we're, we're in the process and, and, and the motion on the floor is, is that we deduct $5,000 from WHP when they had to re-drill all those holes and, uh, Mr. Core is getting full reimbursed. Is, is that what I understand we're doing?
Dirk.
Yes, sir. That is.
Well, I do know, since I was part of this, or part of the building and making, and seeing it come to fruition, I made a couple of trips down there and I, I, I was watching the progress and I looked at it and, and it was, uh, uh, WFP, or WHP, rather, was, was quite a bit concerned, or quite concerned, that the holes didn't match up. And it was an expense and it was a delay to get those holes re-drilled, just so that everybody knows. Well, they probably did.
Okay, no sidebars, please.
And so I also think that the staff did a good job of coming, coming forward with a good, with a good solution. And I appreciate the, the council members that were here for the Public Works Meeting to, to listen to all that and come back with a recommendation on what they think that was going. So I'm not going to support the motion on the floor and I'm going to, if it, if it fails, then I will support the, uh, the original motion.
Okay. Let's also go to Ron Weifembach.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Jason Green.
Go ahead, please, state your question.
Jason, if, uh, if we, um, deny this, this substitute motion and approve the, the first motion, I hate being the judge up here not knowing all the facts of everything that's went on. Does that eliminate Mr. Core's opportunities to pursue, like, something legally? I mean, it seems to be being the judge and a jury up here, I'm not comfortable with that.
I think it, I think that it probably would because I'm, I'm sure that we have, uh, language in our, in our final change orders that, to the effect that that is a release and settlement of all claims. So I think it would prevent him from bringing additional claims to the city. However, if it doesn't and he were to sue the city, I would recommend to the city council that you counterclaim against him for the additional expense that actually was incurred.
Well, that, that's a point I'd be making. I don't want to stop somebody from pursuing something if he'd done the work and he, and he feels he did it, he should have an opportunity to make his claim, but I don't think that we have a position to do that here, so, thank you.
Very good. Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Core.
Well, okay.
This is a yes or a no, if you'd allow me.
Very good. Please ask, the, the thing is, is we're going on almost half an hour in this and if we're not going to come to some resolution, the chair's going to look for a motion to continue this item. Please continue.
It's a yes or no question, Mayor. The question is, uh, Mr. Core, were you offered an opportunity to address the issue prior?
To make the repairs? No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, I mean, this conversation's gone on for half an hour and it's been discussed at previous, several occasions previously. And I would make a motion that we continue this item so that JR and, um, Mr. Bafuco could be a part of the discussion. This is a very, at this point in time, we're hearing not the whole discussion, but part of it. And, um, I think without the benefit of that full discussion, we probably are, are lacking some information in making this decision. So I would make second substitute motion to continue this item.
We have a second substitute motion, continue this item to what date specific, please?
To the next, is it, did it come before Public Works? I think it did. To the next Public Works Meeting or to council meeting?
That's, that's your call. It's your motion.
Um, I would send it back to Public Works, the next Public Works Meeting.
The substitute, second substitute motion on the floor is to continue this item to the next Public Works Committee meeting. Uh, before we go to Alderman Johnson, just a reminder, the motion on the floor is for continuation. Please refrain, please keep your, um, comments to that motion. Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm aware of the rules and I will follow them. I'm opposed to the continuation for this reason. The Public Works Committee has heard that every member of the Public Works Committee that stayed there for the full discussion does, supports the staff's, uh, deal, so that's not going to change. Even the Alderman that was not on that committee that was in the room supports the staff's recommendation, which was the original motion. If you send it back to the same committee with the same people that are there, you'll have the same conclusion. By continuing this, the only thing you will do is the next council meeting, you'll have more people here and you'll have another hour discussion on the same issue. At some point, I believe that the council needs to have some trust in the other committee that takes the time, listens to the information, catalogs it, analyzes it, and makes a decision. The decision by that committee was to support the staff's decision, which essentially splits the baby and, and gives some to each one and recognizes that, that there, that there is problems here. So I'm going to oppose the continuation motion and I hope the council does as well. Hopefully that stayed on the mark of the proper discussion.
Very well done. Thank you. Uh, let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, well said, Tom. I think, I'm not in support of continuing it on either because I think we can, I think we can handle it right here now. And so I won't be supporting the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Malcolm Chapman. Okay, we have no more on the floor. Motion on the floor is a second substitute motion. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
I understand Tom's concern and if it helps to withdraw this motion to continue, um, I, I will do that. I just think that it's silly for us to continue this conversation. It was well-vetted. I, I agree with Tom and Lloyd that this payment should be made.
Okay. Is there any objection to withdrawing the motion? Any objection? If not, the chair will assume that the motion has been withdrawn. We are back to the first substitute motion is to pay the, uh, change order in amount of, and we did have a new change order amount, $8,470.11. Uh, Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think it was in part a good motion to continue because we've had a half an hour worth of discussion. I think we should continue it back here. So I will make a second substitute motion to continue this item back to the council meeting where we can get the other side here as well and then every council member can hear it and not just Public Works. That's my motion.
Okay, we, once again, have a second substitute motion to continue this back to the next city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion only, please? Alderman Bill O'Krepke.
If I could have just a little latitude, if we, if, if we do pay this, are we going to consider paying the other person for the drilling the holes? And that would be my, if we, if, if we're going to continue, could we bring that forward? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, any additional comments? Seeing none. The second substitute motion is to continue this to the next city council meeting. Seeing no further discussions, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
LaCroy?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Earl Bedd?
No.
O'Krepke? Chapman?
Aye.
Weifembach?
Aye.
Olson? Kroger? Quaker?
Aye.
So therefore the motion fails and we are back to the original motion. The original motion on the floor is for approval. Everyone clear on that motion? Let's see. No? Are we back to the second substitute motion?
The second substitute motion failed, so you're back to the first substitute.
First substitute motion. First substitute motion on the floor is for approval with the dollar amount being $8,470.11. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? These, it is Deb's motion. So we are on the sec, we are on the substitute motion and that is to pay Mr. Core the amount of $8,470.11. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make it clear to the council that if we pay the additional to this contractor, I will vote to take the other amount away from the other contractor, which I do believe is unfair, but I will not put the taxpayers as the ultimate loser and pay them both, which is extra money to get the job done that did not get done on the contract price. So I, I just don't want to turn the taxpayers into a loser here. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Um, just, just again, you guys, we asked him if he was asked to correct the problem. He said no. The other contractor came back and had somebody else do the work. I don't think I have seen people have somebody do the work and then call somebody else and he, and he did the other work right and he had somebody else come do the work and now he's telling this guy's taking his money without even giving him the chance to fix his own work. That's unfair. None of us, if we do work or we do it wrong, we always want to be told that we did it wrong and have the chance to fix it. Now we're telling him, that guy took that choice to get somebody else to fix it instead of, instead of the original guy. That's his fault if he has to- That's his fault if he has to suck up the cost of having somebody else fix it. He should've gave the guy that did the work in the first place the chance to fix it.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, you know, like I said before, we went great detail over this at the Public Works meeting before, and there was two separate items as far as how it was bid out and, and the second item, he was aware they needed to be accurate. Um, seventy-one anchor bolts is not just a little bit. It's not like a piece of wood where you can elongate the foundation to put it on and it's a simple fix. Mr. Cor made the comment at the last meeting that, you know, a machine shop could've done it for five hundred dollars, which, if that was the case, then I'm sure that company, instead of paying this other company to fix it, would've went to someone locally and had it done for five hundred dollars. That wasn't the case. So, if, if we approve this, I'm, what's gonna stop the next W H P from coming forward and saying, "We need our, our money back." We need our, the full ten thousand some odd dollars that we paid to fix this back, not just part of it. If we're talking about being fair, would, then, that would be the fair thing to do, because he didn't fix it. He didn't follow the plans. Uh, there was work that needed to be done to reconstruct it, and so I won't be supporting the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's next go to Alderman Karen Olson.
I won't be in support of the motion on the floor either.
Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
I'd like to call the question.
Is there any objection to calling the question? Any objection? If not, we will call the question. The motion on the floor is calling the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So, the question has been called and the question on the floor is the substitute motion, uh, which is Deb Hadcock's motion to pay the final change order in an amount of eight thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and eleven cents. Everyone clear on that motion? We do go straight to the vote here. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
No.
Johnson?
No.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Earl Bud?
No.
O'Krepeki?
No.
Chapman?
No.
Wyffenbach?
No.
Olson?
No.
Kroger?
No.
Quaker?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Okay, motion fails on a, looks like an eight to two vote, is that correct?
That's correct.
We're back to the original motion. Original motion is for approval as listed on the agenda. Any additional comments on that motion, please? Any additional comments? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with, I believe, one no from Alderman Hadcock. Was there any additional no's? Okay, very good. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. We are on to item forty-four. Mr. Green, I think you had that one polled.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I received an email, uh, late today from the building official. He's looking into a complaint about one of the proposed licenses for house mover Roger Johnson, the Royal Company South Dakota Incorporated. He's requested that this item be continued for two weeks, so I would suggest the council take that particular license up separately and approve, uh, the rest in one vote.
Okay, so the chair will look for a motion to approve item number forty-four as listed with the exception of Roger Johnson, which is a house mover license. Is that correct? Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for discussion. Uh, let's see. Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like the record to reflect my abstention from this vote as Golden West Technologies is my employer. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that. Any additional comments or questions? Motion on the floor is for approval with the exception of Roger Johnson, house mover. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So, Jason, do we need to have a separate motion to continue this? Okay.
Second.
And we're gonna continue this back to legal and finance, is that correct? Okay.
That's my motion.
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is continue the license renewal for Roger Johnson back to legal and finance, next legal and finance committee. Any discussion? Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That is the end of our consent calendar. Uh, chair would look for a motion to open the public comment period for items forty-five through sixty. Forty-five. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public comment period for items forty-five through sixty. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We are into our public comment period and we do have a speaker request form on item number forty-five from Toby Kearns from the Rapid City Professional Hockey LLC.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Toby Kearns, attorney for Rapid City Professional Hockey LLC, the owners of Rapid City Rush. Um, speaking in, on topic, uh, it's been moved on to, with fifty-seven. In front of you is, uh, an agreement, um, I drafted and, uh, the city attorney, Jason Green and Joel Landine and I, uh, worked on, um, that, uh, first of all, uh, Thursday we deposited a, a check with the city Rapid City Cashiers Check for an amount of eighteen thousand five hundred, which covers the design fees proposed for forefront for the, the changes in the seating. Um, also per the agreement, um, there, we will be required upon the, our approval of the costs of this additional seating that, uh, we also have that money to you in the same manner and in the same time. Um, of course, I'll be here if there's any question in regards to the agreement itself when it comes up before you.
Mr. Kearns, you also had a speaker request form on item number fifty-seven. I think you covered both.
Hand in hand, yeah.
Yep, very good. Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Scott, uh, Rigglesworth on item number fifty-eight. If you, there again, would just identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Scott Rigglesworth. Um, hopefully, this is our last step, but, uh, not really sure yet. Um, I'm hoping that the council tonight declares the emergency and, uh, issues a contract out to mainline contracting so we can get our sewer line fixed and we can stop worrying about when this thing's gonna fail. Uh, and, uh, again, thank the council for taking this matter up and, uh, hopefully be taking care of it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We do not have any additional speaker request forms for items forty-five through sixty. Anything else? If not, the chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public comment period. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're on to ordinances, item number forty-six, and Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Number forty-six is a first reading of ordinance number fifty-three fifty-nine in ordinance, ordinance amending section seventeen oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, resoning the within described property located at twenty-nine thirty-five Sheridan Lake Road.
Approval?
Thank you.
Very good. We have a motion for approval. It, I'm gonna go to the city staff. Um, I have a note here that that's not the recommendation. I just wanna make sure that's clear. Is that correct?
This is for just setting the first reading, so.
Okay, we're okay then. Okay, very good. Motion on the floor for its approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes with one no from Alderman Karen Olson. Very good. Thank you, everyone. Item number forty-seven, please.
Forty-seven is a second reading of ordinance number fifty-three fifty-eight establishing a thirty-minute parking zone by amending ten forty-four zero one zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, let's see, we're on to item number forty-eight, please.
Forty-eight is a confirmation of reappointment of Steve Dosier, Dwayne Baumgarten, and Jackie Allen to the beautification committee, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer a substitute motion to approve forty-eight through fifty-three.
Okay, we have a substitute motion and the substitute motion is to approve items forty-eight through fifty-three. Any discussion on the motion? We did have a second, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any discussion on that motion? Is your light now working?
It's not.
Okay, very good. We'll recognize, uh, Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mayor. I, uh, I'll, I agree with the motion. I just, uh, with approving these people and I know that there's a, there's a process that these people go through, uh, say a common citizen or whatever goes through to get appointed to these committees and, uh, I was hoping that I could ask someone how we follow up with those people or if there's a process that they get a letter, if they're gonna get on a committee or not get on a committee. I know there was a time when I applied for one of these and, uh, I called the mayor's office, I called, um, the growth management people and I never got a response. And I, I don't wanna make sure that people that are going through the process get that, get a, a certified response from our council, so.
I can answer that if I can, Ron. Uh, these are all mayoral appointments and what we do is we contact every single person and talk with them personally to make sure that they're still interested and that they're committed. Uh, once we have actually, uh, adopted or approved all the committee assignments, then we will go back to anybody who actually put in an application that was not selected, we'll get a letter thanking them for their interest. But we don't send that out until after we, after we actually approve everything in case we need to actually, uh, fill one of the slots.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval of items forty-eight through fifty-three inclusive. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item fifty-four, please.
Fifty-four is to authorize the mayor and finance office to sign a contract with air methods of medical, for medical transport, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I presume that this has the support of our fire department.
Yes, it does. Very good. Thank you. And just a note, uh, some of the lights are not working up here, so I'm, I'm watching the board, but if, if you turn your, if you try to hit your light and it's not coming on, just please flag me down. I apologize if I miss anybody. System isn't quite working right tonight. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number fifty-five, please.
Number fifty-five is to approve a travel request for Charles Jansen, Code Sultan, and Bernie Hall, chief electric inspector, to then attend the ICC International Codes Training Seminar in Denver, Colorado, March through the third, through the seventh, two thousand eight, in the approximate amount of two thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item fifty-six, please.
Fifty-six is a recommendation from the annexation committee to request staff to work toward the annexation of a wholly surrounded areas of the city, initially by sending letters to the affected property owners and holding a public meeting to discuss voluntary annexation, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to let the council know that, uh, we had some discussion at the last meeting as well, and it's the interest of some of the council members that serve on that committee to, um, take a look internally and find out maybe what we can do to staff up, uh, regarding the effort of annexation, so just to let the mayor know that's coming and the staff will have a report coming that, but, but there are some fairly important areas that we would like to look at and as long as we manage the staff properly in the community, I think we can get there, so, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, and thank you to all the committee members on this, uh, annexation subscommittee. I know they've been working hard at this issue. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Whoops, I'm, very good. Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. There is some people in the audience, I believe, that wanted to speak. Uh, you still want, you're, you're fine? Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number fifty-seven, please.
Fifty-seven is to authorize the mayor and finance office to sign contract with Rapid City Professional Hockey LLC, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Back to item number forty-five, please. Item forty-five.
Forty-five is to approve the amendment to the contract with Forefront Design Incorporated for Civic Center Expansion, ID P A P zero six one five five five, in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred. Move approval.
Thank you. Motion on the floor for, is for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with one no from, was that Alderman Quaker? Very good. Thank you, everyone. Item number fifty-eight, please. That would be Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Declare a status, status of the sanitary sewer and emergency and direct staff to award the informal bid to Mainline Contracting for a base bid of one hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and four dollars, plus a twenty percent contingency for a total amount not to exceed one eighty-three, two forty-four, eighty, and fund through a sewer utility enterprise fund and, and direct staff to bring forward a recommendation to revise the capital improvement plan, and move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that there's interest on the council in recovering a portion of the cost of this through an assessed project. In order to do that, you're gonna need to go through the normal assessment process, which includes publicly noticing a hearing on a resolution of necessity. That, that part of your process is probably gonna take two more council meetings. So, you're not really gonna be moving forward on this project until you've got the resolution of necessity in place. So my recommendation to you would be not to use the, the mechanism of declaring an emergency here, but rather direct your public works staff to do the advertisements for the resolution of necessity, to notice that public hearing, and also to authorize them to prepare a bid specification so that you can use the normal bid advertising process. It seems to me that the situation that's in hand could be questioned as to whether or not it actually constitutes an emergency at this point.
Very good. Further discussion? Further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepeki.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If we approve this tonight, how does this affect the going after the ten percent from, from the remainder of, or from the, from the people?
Is that a question for Mr. Green? Let's try Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Until the resolution of necessity is in place, you don't have a mechanism that, that will allow you to assess those costs, and the assessment procedure is the only way that you can guarantee that you will actually collect a portion of the cost back from the homeowners.
Alderman Krepke, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, I didn't understand very well. So if we pass this, can we go after the, so can we expect to get the twen, the ten percent back or not?
Jason Green, city attorney.
I think that if you are declaring that this is an emergency and you need to bypass the public bidding process, once you do that, you need to get out there and get the work done, which means that you will not have time to go through the assessment process. So my opinion is, no, you're not gonna be able to collect the, that money from the homeowners if you proceed by declaring an emergency tonight.
You still have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And this is a question for Dirk, perhaps. I know I'm gonna be putting you on the spot, but is this an emergency?
Mr. Jablonsky.
Mr. Rigglesworth said it best when he said they're worried. If it's working today, to the best of my knowledge, it may have been in the condition it is today for years, for all we know. So the emergency is in the not knowing when it could fail. But as far as I know, it's working today.
So one last question, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Krepke, you still have the floor, sir.
So explain to me why that we have to jump through all the hoops in a hurry to, to bypass all the safeguards that we have in our, in the system to, to do something that's really not an emergency and we, we won't be able to recuperate the ten percent that, that we hope to get anyway. That's a rhetorical question, Dirk. That's just a comment. So I'm not sure I'm gonna support this.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this is pretty frustrating to me because when this first come forward, it was probably, what, two, three months ago? It, it was an emergency at the point in time that it was all brought up, that at any time this could go. It was said that we had a collapse line. We scoped it, we've looked at it. Throughout all this process, we could have started this assessment, so-called assessment process, at the very beginning, and here we are three months later saying, whoa, stop, let's go back and, and do it the way it's supposed to be doing. We, we decided it was an emergency a long time ago. I, and now we're gonna sit back and wait even longer because it's not proper. Well, I, I think we need to move forward. It, it is an emergency. It is falling apart, and let's cut all the, the side stuff and just, let's get it done. That's what they're waiting for. We can worry about the ten percent after it's fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hatcock.
Dang, Lloyd, I couldn't say it better myself. I appreciate that, Lloyd. I'm with him all the way on this. We've been waiting, and if we needed to have it done, and we needed to have this process again moved forward, then it should have been done then. And we all declared it, Public Works talked about it, they were declaring it. And again, I think we should move forward, take it as an emergency, get it done with, and just be done with it. But thank you, Lloyd, for your comments.
Thank you. Alderman Hatcock, let's next go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I tend to disagree with my colleagues down on the other end. I think if we had gone through the normal process earlier on, we probably would be where we wanted to be today. But somehow, as, as we do as a council sometimes, we put the cart before the horse, and we try to get out there too quickly. And I think this is what some of us talked about before, let's go through the process. I still think if we pass this tonight, there's still some questions that still need to be answered. I think a part of this discussion before was, if we pass this, now there could potentially be another ten percent that the city would have to pay. Where is all of this money coming from, and what project are we not going to do now because we've declared this an emergency and we think that this needs to be done today? Where is that project that we're gonna cut, or where is that money gonna come from? I don't, maybe that's a question for Public Works.
Yep. Did you want to direct a question, or?
Yes, for Dirk, please.
Dirk, do you understand the question? I think the question was, was the funding source for this?
I do, Mayor, thank you. The project that we've identified as a funding source is a two, two thousand and eight scheduled project. It is the Allen Avenue Alley. This, this section of sewer has, has required spot repairs, there are bad joints and root intrusion. We would just work with that for another year and, and that's the project.
Let's see. Alderman Chapman, you still have the floor, sir.
I'm hesitant to ask the question, but I, I will. So what's the status of the Allen Street line?
Mr. Jablonsky, can you answer that?
I can, Mayor, thank you. It is one that we have to watch. Again, we do spot repairs as it has been failing. It does inconvenience the customers that are served by this line when it does fail. The roots, the joints are separated, and, and we routinely have to clean it because of the roots that, that enter between the joints, or at the joints.
That's the next one.
Okay. Okay. Alderman Malcolm Chapman, you still have the floor, sir.
I'm not gonna go down that line, Dirk, but if, if, if we were gonna, I disagree with the motion on the floor, first of all, let me say that. But if we are going to look for, if this does pass, and we're gonna look for a line or a project to delay, I would hope that we would look to delay a project that's not maybe as crucial as a, a project that could potentially fail because there are cracks or roots in the line or what have you. So if this does pass, I would hope that we would look for something that's not as critical as that line, maybe another project that we could put off.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Lloyd's comments on it. I, I think that, I remember it's been about two months ago that we talked about this, probably a lot longer than this. We knew at that time that this was high priority, an emergency. My toilet backed up was just two days ago, and I know it was an emergency looking for that plunger, trying to stop that from happening. I can imagine what happens if we allow this to keep going on and on and on without fixing it. I think that there's room, we could find the money to fix this, whether it comes from redirecting one project. I think that's saying that we have to take it out of this fund that requires a high priority project to be moved backwards is, is a manipulation. I think that there's room somewhere else in the budget to get this done. I'm not exactly sure where it is. And I would, I would also challenge our, our city attorney to find an opportunity that we can assess this project and just move on with it tonight, because we just keep moving it, moving it, moving it. We have some people in dire need to get their sewers fixed, and I don't understand why we keep moving this and moving it like, like the, the three-shell game. And each time they come here, we ask them to find the shell with the ball under it. I'm not willing to go down that road again. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. After hearing our public works director tell where these dollars are gonna come from, I'm certainly not gonna support it. We still have an ordinance out there that we haven't changed to complement this neighborhood. We haven't done anything about that. Now we're talking about taking a project that's been on the works, I would assume, for quite some time, and fixing these people's problem, and giving the people that are scheduled to have the work done, the problem they're concerned about. That makes no sense to me. I mean, all we're doing is we're switching, we're switching places, one location to another. That makes no sense at all. And I certainly can't support that motion that's on the floor tonight. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
For all the reasons that Ron has described, I can't support the motion on the floor either.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepeki.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. In all fairness to the, to the applicant, you know, we, we voted and we approved this, this line to be fixed. Whether there's other lines that are more critical than this, it's really a moot point, in my, in my mind. I mean, we said we're gonna do it, let's do it. My question is, is that we need to do it right, and we got safeguards in it, and, and you're, you're not gonna convince me that, that this is an emergency. You can convince me it needs to get fixed, but it's not an emergency, in my opinion. And based upon what our, our city staff is saying, it, it is an emergency. So I think for a couple more weeks to go out and, or whatever, maybe another two, two meetings, to make sure that we're doing the process correctly, we're gonna get it fixed. It's not a question whether we're gonna get it fixed or not. It's just, let's just follow the process. Let's just follow the rules. And if it takes a couple more city council meetings to do the right things, then let's do the right things. It's not an emergency. We don't have to rush through it. We are gonna get it fixed because we said we would, but let's just follow the rules and let's do the right thing here for the city and the taxpayers. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to state the obvious. Essentially, we're awarding a quote of one hundred and fifty-two, one hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and four dollars. We do have a contingency with that. Our current program allows for a forty percent match, which is sixty-one thousand and eighty-one dollars. By this motion, we are simply increasing what we normally would do by seventy-six thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars. So it isn't just one hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and four new dollars. We've already agreed by a current past practice that we have in place at a resolution that we go forty percent. By doing this, we're going to ninety. So I wanna make sure that everybody understands, this is not just a new one hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and four dollars. And the other comment I would say is that I'm somewhat disappointed in now saying that we can't do this because it has to go through the process of assessment. We've discussed a number of times at council and at legal finance and public works and whoever, wherever else we've discussed this, we've never once said, gee, we gotta take care of this first. And the council has discussed at least probably two to three council meetings of declaring an emergency, and all of a sudden, now that we're set to do it, after even waiting a time to get a quote, our staff says, no, can't do it because you haven't done that yet. I think that's kind of blind, being blindsided at the council, so therefore I'm gonna support the motion on the floor.
Thank you. Let's go back. Let's see, is there anyone that wishes to speak before Alderman Karen Olson speaks for a second time? If not, Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question would be for Jason. Without the assessment process, is there a scenario in which one of the property owners would ultimately not be responsible for the ten percent?
Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any property owner that decides they're not responsible will not be responsible for it. You would be relying on them to, out of the goodness of their heart, participate. The, the policy that was referenced about the forty percent is inherently tied to the assessment process. So until you have an assessed project, you don't have a mechanism for apportioning portions of the cost between the city and between the homeowner. If you don't, if you're not in the assessment process, you're in a CINDY-funded project, essentially.
Very good. Karen, you still have the floor. Anything else? Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
I call the question, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any objection to calling the question? Any objection? So we immediately go to the vote on calling the question. So the motion on the floor is calling the question. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes with, okay, that was, that was on the motion to call the question. Okay, so that motion passes with no descending votes. So we are to the original motion. Motion on the floor is for approval. Item fifty-eight, everyone clear on that? And we have to go directly to the vote? Let's go, Jason Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a part of the motion, when you are awarding on, on a quote, you're required to spread the quotes in the minutes, so I would suggest that you ask the finance officer to list the amounts of the quotes that you've received, received before you vote.
Very good. We'll go through that, and just for clarification, we cannot take any further discussion because the question has been called, but we do need to allow him to read the quotes in. Very good. Mr. Preston, can you read the quotes in, please? Or Mr. Jablonsky, you can also read them in. Go ahead, please, read them in.
I can. Thank you, Mayor. We had two options. The, we received quotes from three contractors. And option one, from Mainline Contracting, the, the quote was one hundred and fifty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars. From RCS Construction Incorporated, the quote was one hundred and sixty-seven, one hundred and twelve dollars. And from Hills Materials Company, the quote was three hundred and ninety-five thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. On the second option, which was to extend the sewer from both Mount Rushmore Road and Seventh Street, and for clarification, option one was from Mount Rushmore Road only. Option two quotes from Mainline Contracting was one hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and four dollars. RCS Construction Incorporated provided no quote, and Hills Materials Company quoted three hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. The low quote was for the second option for Mainline Contracting, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and four dollars. Staff is recommending, because there are no plans or specification, this was done in the field, that a twenty percent contingency be added.
Very good. Mr. Preston, is that your recommendation, since you are actually the one that has to read that in, I believe? Recommendation from, is for approval of option two to Mainline Contracting for a base bid of fifty-two thousand seven hundred and four dollars with a twenty percent contingency, which would bring the total amount to one eighty-three, two forty-four, eighty. Is that correct?
It is correct. That, that is what was read off, and that is the staff's recommendation of one hundred and fifty-two, seven hundred and four.
Okay, very good. Everyone clear on the motion? We go directly to the vote. Vote on the, or the motion on the floor is for approval, as stated for option two. Any further, well, no further discussion. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Earl Byd?
Aye.
O'Krepeki?
No.
Chapman?
No.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
Olson?
No.
Kroger?
No.
Quaker?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes on a six to four vote, is that correct?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. We are on to items, let's see here real quick. Ron, did you have a question?
I do, Mayor. It really concerns that we just took a project on Allen Street, and if, if we could, I, I would like to have a public works director bring back to legal and finance or public works how many people are affected by what we just did on Allen Street.
What you, if you would, since we don't have it on the agenda, if you could just get with them and, and actually place it on the public works or legal and finance agenda, if you would, Alderman Kroger. Appreciate that. Very good. Okay, very good, everyone. We are on to item number fifty-nine in bids. Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. We have just the one item on the bid items for this evening, and that is for new two thousand eight ADA accessible raised floor para-transit vehicles for the Rapid City Transportation System. We received three bids as listed. Staff is recommending the lowest responsible bid of Harlow's Bus Sales Incorporated in an amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. I would like to make a short explanation.
Can we have a motion for discussion, please?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept option number two, which is Harlow Bus Sales, Inc., for three forty-five, one's, is that one sixty or one eighty?
One sixty.
Very good. Mr. Preston, explanation.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason why that's the lowest responsible bid is item number three there, North Central Bus Sales. There was no bid bond provided, which was required by state statute, and that was not provided. Also, Harlow's Bus Sales, doing business as PTI, which is Public Transport Incorporated, they could not make, meet the current, the requirement of a hundred and twenty days, which is critical to Rapid Transit, which is also part of the bid. So, Mr. Sagan is here. If you have any questions on any specifics, what staff is recommending accepting the bid from Harlow's Bus Sales for three forty-five, one sixty. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Jason Green, did you have a, anything on this? Your light is still on. Okay, let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
It isn't, it isn't clear from looking at this. I mean, these are two companies with the same name, and is there any difference between these two business companies?
Mr. Preston.
There is. I can ask Mr. Sagan come forward. He, I'm gonna take a shot at this, and then he can fill in gaps here. But my understanding is Harlow's Bus Sale, there's, there's the company, and then there's also like a franchise, which is a PTI, which is, works as part of this. And I guess maybe you can explain that further.
Rich, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Those are two separate and distinct companies. One's People Transportation Incorporated, the other's Harlow Bus Sales. And they're separate businesses or separately incorporated.
Okay. Anything else? Alderman Olson, you still have the floor. Very good. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is for approval, item option number two. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We are on to item fifty-nine A, and that was under council items and liaison reports. I have a fifty-nine A, which is city water update report, and that was Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. A few weeks ago at Public Works, and I believe again at council, we had a brief update on the status of the city's water supply. And one of the things that was brought forward that if things continued at their current rate in terms of lack of moisture, that within two to three years, we would be seeing a severe water shortage in Rapid City. The Water Task Force, I think, has done some excellent work, and there's some fixes that have been recommended, and including upgrades to the existing plant, and also a new plant. I know that the consultant has been working on this, and that presentation will likely be coming to the council later this spring. I had a sidebar before the meeting with a public works director and asked him if it was possible for the city council to ask Public Works to bring forward preliminary information as soon as we have any information that can be presented to the council, so that the council can start what will likely be a tedious process to discuss bonding and, and costs and rates and, and all of that. So I, I would like to offer a motion to ask Public Works to bring forward numbers as quickly as possible to Public Works as soon as such numbers are available from a consultant.
We have a motion and a second to request Public Works to bring forward preliminary information. Was it to a city council meeting, or Public Works? Public Works, as soon as the information's available. Any discussion on that motion? Karen, your light is on, and I'm, okay, very good. I apologize. There again, I, I'm not controlling the lights tonight, so, yep, very good. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing none. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to item number sixty, which is a twenty-twelve report. Dirk, were you going to handle that?
Thank you, Mayor. If you would like, I can go over the changes since the last report.
If you could, please.
Thank you. Looking, and you, each of you should have this summary.
Dirk, can you put it up on the screen so people can see? Dirk, can you put it up on the screen so people can see?
Uh, the first item is, uh, item, uh, number four, that is the police evidence traffic and transit building. Um, that building is about ninety-five percent, at least phase one of it is about ninety-five percent complete. Uh, if you look at the total project, it's about sixty-five percent complete. We have received reimbursements from the Federal Transit Administration, and those are the numbers in parentheses in red, of, uh, nine-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty dollars, one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, and six-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. The balance, uh, as it stands today is one million. Uh, expended out of the twenty-twelve funds is one-million-three-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. Any questions on that one?
Any questions? If not?
Um, the next change is item twenty-eight A, the Doll Art Center, and, um, change order, construction change order number four was approved in the amount of six-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars. Uh, the total expended out of the twenty-twelve fund is three-million-sixty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, and that project is a little over fifty percent complete. Questions on that?
Any questions?
Uh, next is item thirty-two. Uh, this is the Civic Center. Um, we had a construction change order for the footing and foundation work with gusts of some builders. That was a credit of seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, and there was a change order number two paid to Sampson Construction for five-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars. Uh, total expended to date is, uh, twenty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, four-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-six dollars.
Okay, very good. We do have a, uh, whoop, Ron, did you have a question? Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna say, if we got for twenty-five thousand, we're in good shape.
Twenty-five, twenty-five million. That's why I work.
We knew what you meant. Mr. Wyffenbach?
I had a question for Dirk.
Okay, fairway.
Dirk, you know, I'm not gonna digress the conversation, but you're saying ninety-five percent complete, fifty percent complete, and I'm just looking at the numbers, assuming, how are you getting that? Are you just going by the project? I mean, it's not by the numbers, or?
We're going by the project, not the dollars.
'Cause at the end, a lot of the, the dollars could come in higher.
Yes, right. Sometimes they're spent ahead of time, too.
Okay, there's some of it. Looking at the numbers, like, ninety-five percent complete, and then we're at a million three, and the project was slated for four-point-four, and we're at a million three, and you're saying the project's ninety-five percent complete, going back to the evidence building?
Phase one of that project is ninety-five percent complete. There's a, there's a phase two of Wash Bay that is yet to come.
And then, okay, I appreciate that. Another question is, we passed over to Soccer Field, is that not your territory, then?
Uh, that's not an ongoing project. I mean, it's one that's being discussed, but we haven't expended any funds out of that yet.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments, and I, I would like to mention my concern relating, uh, operation and maintenance, uh, costs. I think it's also an opportunity for me to, uh, to explain, um, my, uh, no position on a relatively minor, uh, change order, uh, earlier in the agenda relating to the Civic Center. And that is, is that I understand, using that as an example, that, uh, um, you know, is the, the costs on that, the upfront costs on that were largely picked up by the, uh, the hockey league, but the, the point I'd like to make is, is I don't think that operation and maintenance costs are being, uh, are being, uh, considered, um, when we're expanding, uh, projects, either building the initial projects or expanding the projects, uh, when they're already underway. And I, I would sure like to see a twenty-twelve, uh, update at some point, have an extra column, if possible, for, uh, operation and maintenance, uh, costs. I'll use an example that happened, uh, six or seven years ago, when the city built the Roosevelt Swimming Pool Complex, and, uh, it's a wonderful, uh, facility, but it, it now has a, at least a four-hundred-thousand-dollar, uh, annual city subsidy. It's a great facility, and it's a good place to go swimming, but the point is, is that I think the city council, and we need, we need to do, uh, more due diligence, uh, in, in determining what the operation and maintenance costs are, so that we don't, uh, saddle future budgets and future councils, uh, with a problem. So I would just like to see if it's possible down the line to add a, uh, a column for operation and maintenance, and that when we do expand projects in midstream, that we explain what the implications are, if any, uh, as to the impact on the O and M costs. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a, see a light on from Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just request that in the future, the near future that we have, we invite Brian Maluski to give us an update on ticket sales and things like that. Um, I, I see this as a great problem to have. You have the ICE folks coming, and they say, gee, we want more seating. We've totally sold out of club seats in a matter of a couple of weeks. These are the highest-priced seats, they're in great demand. Certainly, when you're talking about operation and maintenance, the seats that are full generate more revenue than the seats that are empty. Um, it seems that these seats are, are highly sought after. They're in an area where they can actually buy more concessions, and the way we really make our money is by concessions. It's a kind of easy decision for me to make, that, that full seats and people that, that buy concessions are gonna make this thing float. Uh, I've been excited about this project, and I want to continue to say it, that, uh, my, my understanding is, uh, six weeks ago, almost two months ago, uh, twenty percent of this arena was sold a year before the first game is played, which is remarkable. Uh, side discussion I had with, uh, Brian Maluski from the Civic Center said that, that six of the ten, um, box seats have a non-refundable, uh, substantial amount of money down, holding those. And this was a couple of months ago, and they hadn't even really gone out and, and, and pushed this. And I think it's good information to have, because literally, the only part of the Civic Center, and probably the only part of anything that we build or do, the sky boxes themselves are the only part of a facility, since I've been on the council, that will actually pay for construction of it and generate a positive revenue. So I think that's one of the stories that's been untold. And we had a lot of criticism regarding those kinds of things, but again, we did, I believe, this facility right. We balanced sky boxes, and we balanced club seating, and, and we find out that the club seating is really on fire. And I, I think that it's exciting to see this facility, and how well it's being received for the ICE, long before the first, again, game is being played. But I'd like to have, request, Mayor, that you bring Brian forward for, uh, some kind of a, uh, overview for the council and the community on, on how the project is moving along.
I'll see if you can come to the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? If not, I guess the chair would look for probably a motion to acknowledge your report. You or Dirk? Dirk, were you done?
That's it, Mayor, yes, thank you.
Did we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge your report. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I have a sixty A, which was an introduction by Mr. Jim Preston for a new city employee.
Thank you, Mayor. Melissa, could I get you to stand up? If you wouldn't want to look down toward Jason and Jackie, this is Melissa Hardrick. She is taking over Donna, Donna Winter's position in the, uh, finance office, and she is also serving as an understudy for Jackie. In other words, you may see her up here a few times, learning how to take the minutes, et cetera, what goes on with council business, but, uh, so I just want to introduce, uh, Melissa to the council. I also wanted to invite the council to, uh, Donna Winter's, uh, open house on Wednesday, January ninth, this Wednesday, two to four. If you, uh, got time, if you stop by for some coffee and cake and say goodbye to Donna, we'd appreciate it.
Very good.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, and welcome. This, this is not a normal meeting, by the way, just so you know. Okay, we are on to the public hearing items, items sixty-one through eighty-two. The chair would look for a motion to open the public hearing items on items sixty-one through eighty-two. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Sam, did you have a question on opening and public comment? Still have your light on, okay. And there again, I apologize, lights are not working correctly tonight, so sometimes they stay on. Uh, let's see. Motion on the floor is to open public comment. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We do have a speaker request form from Steve Storm on item number eighty-two. And there again, Mr. Storm, if you could just identify yourself for the record, please.
Thank you. I'm Steve Storm at Fifty College Avenue. I have been working, I, I guess I, just to bring everybody back up to speed, last spring I replaced a chain-link fence with a six-foot privacy fence. I was later notified that it was against code in a couple of different manners. I believe everybody has a copy of this up there. Where I've got the yellow marked is my existing fence. What I'm gonna ask the council to do is allow me to move that fence to the property line on the Holcomb Street side, and back to, um, even with the front of my house, on the College Avenue side, and go back up with the six-foot fence. That should alleviate the issue of the site triangle, as well as the, excuse me, as well as the right-of-way. Leaving only, the way I understand it, a six-foot fence in a front yard setback, um, which, I guess, to me, that's actually not my front yard, but I guess, according to the definition of a front yard, it is. Um, I just would like to ask the council for the, uh, consideration on, on putting the six-foot fence back in that location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Storm. Seeing no further speaker requests, we do need to leave the, if I'm not mistaken, we do leave the public comment period open, as we continue on to the public hearings consent calendar, and those are items sixty-one through seventy-two, sixty-one through seventy-two. Does anyone wish to have any item sixty-one through seventy-two pulled from the consent calendar? So, item sixty-one through seventy-two is what we're dealing with, that is on the consent calendar item. If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the cons- Continue public, right, okay. Cont- continue public hearing consent items. So this is our consent calendar for items sixty-one through seventy-two. Chair would look for a motion for approval. We have a motion and a second for approval of a consent calendar, continued public hearing consent calendar, items sixty-one through seventy-two. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to the end of the consent calendars, and chair would ask for a motion to close the public hearing comment period. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to the consent public hearing items, items seventy-three through eighty-one. Does anyone wish to have any of these items removed? Any of these items removed? If not, chair would look for a motion to approve the consent public hearing items seventy-three through eighty-one. We have a motion and a second for approval, items seventy-three through eighty-one. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to item number eighty-two. And that would be, let's see here, I think that, Lloyd, could you ring that, read that in?
This is a, a request by Steve Storm for a hence, our fence, fence height exception to allow a six-foot high fence in a front yard setback, and this is located at Fifty College Avenue, and my motion would be to approve his, his adjusted plan to do the setback, and from my understanding, if that is the case, then we need to add a stop sign on the corner to correct the site triangle, and this is what I was told early on. Okay, so we don't need, need the stop sign. So I, my motion would be to, to approve the exception per his drawing.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. The motion on the floor is to grant the exception to the fence height, uh, requirement as per the drawing up on the dais. Everyone clear on that motion? Let's go to the lights, and Alderman Sam, whoops, Sam, did you want to speak? Your light just disappeared. Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a bit confused on, on the site triangle issues. Does this create site triangle issues, um, or does it not?
Let's see. Did you want to direct that to Bob Dominic? Mr. Dominic, can you answer the question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will take care of the issue.
Okay, this does take care of the site triangle issue?
Yes.
Very good. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Since, since some concern, uh, has been raised regarding this, the, this item, um, Mr. Schumacher has expressed some concerns, Dale Schumacher on, on North Seventh Street has expressed some concerns regarding this, and I just wanted to ask, what, if, if you can explain for me, what adjustment has been made, um, to ensure that the site triangle issues have been addressed?
Mr. Dominic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right now, the fences, if you have the drawing in front of you, the fence, existing fence is at the yellow line, which is right out along the sidewalk, both along, uh, Holcomb Street and College Avenue, and, uh, right now, he is proposing to move it back the twenty feet to the orange line, which is on the property line, and then in line with the front of the house.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, any follow-up? Very good. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
I just wanted to make certain that I'm hearing Mr. Dominic say that, um, both management supports this change. In which case, then I'll be in support of it.
Very good. Let's go back to-
Yeah, make one comment?
Absolutely.
This issue's been pending quite a while. I would want to be assured that this is, this action's going to get taken place soon. And, um, but I would support this, knowing that it's going to be, this change is going to be made soon.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go back to Alderman Lloyd McCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a great compromise. We kind of sent it back from about a month ago to check on easements and, and doing a lot of different stuff that was gonna be really cost-prohibited from doing this without, I personally didn't notice when I did that. Uh, in talking with Steve, this is something that he came up with, which is, I'm not per, don't particularly care for, but he keeps his six, six-foot fence, I mean, he's doing all the setback. I was originally thinking that he was gonna do a four-foot and put it back in the right-of-way, but he, he came up with this, and this is a great compromise on, on his part, and it, it's cost him a great deal of money to, to change this around. Um, I know he, he's expressing some great frustrations in how this has all come down and, and, uh, I share those with him, so I'd appreciate everybody to, to approve the, the sketch that Steve had worked on. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's next go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment that I've said before, when these have come before us, uh, I would just encourage city staff, and I, and I think we're already doing a, a good job of this, but, um, i- is there something else that we can do to inform citizens before they get in this situation, so that it doesn't cost them extra money? I don't know if we could post city requirements at the, where they would shop for the supplies to, to put up, or could instruct a fence, um, I mean, just something, if there's something else that we can do, so we don't have this after the fact, that then citizens are tearing down fences, or cutting them down, or moving them back, uh, at some great expense. So I, I don't know what that could be, but if there's something that we could do, I would encourage us to do that.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that part of the problem here is, the guy lives on a corner lot. I live on a corner lot, and I could see this happening a lot. My neighbor has, had a six-foot fence, they had to cut it down to a four-foot fence. Um, now our dog jumps the fence, but, um, having this, it looks like a good compromise. I think that, uh, when you have a corner lot, you, you're responsible for that sidewalk all the way around, around your, uh, front yard, and, and, and what the regulations, I think, I understand, and I, I think that, uh, Alderman Chapman touches on a, on a legitimate point, that when you have a corner lot, defining a front yard versus defining a backyard is where this complication comes in, and I think part of this complication may have come in from Mr. Storm, and I think he's got a good compromise here, and I'll support it, because I feel your pain. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Does anybody else feel the pain? If not, we'll move on. The motion on the floor. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to the bill list. Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. The council, you have a one-sheet bill list in front of you, total, grand total of three
The council, you have a one-sheet bill list in front of you, total, grand total of three million, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and three dollars and ninety cents. There are no additions or changes. I would recommend approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the bill list as listed, no amendments. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
We do have the, let's see, we did have an addendum that was also included, that was item number eighty-four, Tuscany Square.
This is an appeal, appeal denial for an exception to detail nine dash twelve, the standard specification for public works, construction, two thousand and four addition, tract two of Tuscany Square. This comes from Bob Brandt. Now move for approval.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would recommend that the council include as a part of the motion authorization for the mayor and finance officer to sign the restrictive covenant that is a part of this exception process as a result of your new ordinance.
Is that all right? Is that part of your motion?
Yeah, that'd be part of the motion.
Okay. Okay, the motion on the floor to include also the language to authorize the mayor and the finance officer to sign the covenants on the property. Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Brandt, we actually didn't have a public comment period, because this was an addendum. Did you want to speak, or? The motion on the floor is for approval.
Could I have a quick second, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, you're treading dangerous water, but go right ahead. Motion on the floor is for approval.
Try and move denial.
Tried to warn him. Go ahead, please.
When we started down this path a couple of months ago, Jason advised you that we need to strictly follow up the procedures, so that the final decision was completely above reproach, and we are at the final step in that journey tonight, so I appreciate the support that most of you have given me on this item, and I would appreciate your support one more time. Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor is for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with one no from Alderman Malcolm Chapman. Just couldn't get them all. Sorry about that. Okay, let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney. Do we need an executive session tonight?
We do, and I would appreciate it if the motion maker would include as a part of the motion, that the purpose is for those allowed by SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session, as per allowed by SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna, I just, we, at one point, we directed the city attorney to do some research on, on some of this, I just wondered where we were at.
I think that's coming along. My guess, my understanding is I'll be coming back at the next city council meeting. You're right. Legal and Finance, back to city council.
Thank you.
Okay? Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to go into executive session. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.